Religious freedom is one of the most fundamental of human rights. Because religious freedom comes from the dignity of human being as God's creation. These are the words of Suharto, an Indonesian army officer and politician who served as head of the state and head of the government of Indonesia. The relationship between religion and human rights is both complex and inextricable. Religions provide the essential sources and scales of dignity and responsibility, shame and respect, restraint and regret, restitution and reconciliation that a human right is written into so far and flourishing in any culture. I welcome all those who are present here for the first special session of the eighth international conference on recent trends in human rights and changing faces of religious freedom, put forward by Kerala Law Academy Law College in association with Center for Advanced Legal Studies and Sciences to understand the contributions of religion in development of the ideas and institution of human rights and the major issues and challenges that we face in trying to not be doing religious freedom and human rights. A very warm good afternoon to one and all present here. Today, we are indeed honored with the presence of Dr. Amrulinkam S. of Tamil Nadu National Law University, Kriti Raveli as a resource person for this session. He is an eminent personality with the years of experience in the field of teaching. His areas of interest include international law, environmental law, international trade law, constitutional law, human rights, biodiversity, refugee law and energy laws. I welcome Dr. Amrulinkam S. to address this session. Sir, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, one and all present here. So first of all, I have to thank and congratulate the Kerala Law Academy Law College for organizing such a wonderful session in the contemporary subject. So first of all, I have to thank and congratulate Dr. Bhakshana Madam to her tireless effort and consistent approach for bringing me for today's session. Though I heard repeatedly inform, ma'am, do not worry. So once I consider it, I will join the time with the God's grace and hope I did join the time. And special thanks to all the organizing team. Because I saw such a nice session which is arranged for the purpose of spreading the various issues on how far the religious freedom would facilitate a human rights or vice versa. Then a special thanks to organizing committee and PG student volunteers and volunteers, okay? So with the brief thanksgiving for the organizing team, let me start with my session. For forty-five minutes of discussions today, I wish to make how far the religious freedom would facilitate a person to choose referring various constitutional articles in the era of human rights jurisprudence. This is my boundary, okay? So for name of share, the title is Freedom to Choose Religion in India: A Critical Evaluation From Human Rights Perspective. I made the whole presentations with these five different segments. The first one is what is the meaning and definition, inclusive definition for religion and religious freedom? Then what all the religious freedom will perform, that's functions of religious freedom? Then what all the various human rights instruments which facilitates the people to realize whatever the introducer had mentioned, dignity, individuality, right to self-determination, right to belief and worship? The fourth one is what are the interrelations between religious freedom and right to choose by referring constitution? The last and final one is what are the various case laws which is helping us to strengthen whether our understanding on right to religion and fundamental freedom to choose in the human rights era is right or wrong? Good? So let me speak for forty-five minutes. If anybody would like to clarify anything, please resolve question, then I am ready to respond after forty-five minutes. Good? So religion occupies a vital role in the human lives. There are international scholars who had categorically described religion is the socially defined patterns of beliefs concerning the ultimate meaning of life. It assumes the existence of supernatural. How it could be? The activities whichever carried by the individuals who directly or indirectly influence the minds and conviction of the people. It is indispensable the role in the society at large which trend to reshape the human behavior. There are international scholars again who had introduced the religious tradition demonstrates its nature and its strength by igniting debates of increasing rational precision and practices that assume the rectified presence of the initial without exhausting the initial strength. Now we are going to really verify what all the religious freedom would facilitate us to realize. David Lipscope in a speech on religious sentiment and its influence on social and political had described like this. Not only does the religious sentiment control the social and political development of a nation, but each particular mode of religious faith has its own peculiar and invariable social and political counterparts. It is a condition of true worship that the worshipper shall so nearly as far as possible liken himself to the object of his adoration. Okay, so whatever faith the individual have that could be translated into action for a social development, that particular social development which facilitates for political development of a country. You can take any illustrations from a leading power like United States of America or when we have a plural society like India. Although there are debates which precise the country which is following secularism. Then one more international scholar who had described the religion is nothing but a belief about the meaning of life. A commitment by the individual and the group to this belief which facilitates a system of moral practices resulting from commitment to this belief and it leads to recognition by the proponents. Evans in his article in the year 2001 had described freedom of religion which is considered as an essential element of self-determination and social pluralism. Freedom of religion can also be described as an umbrella term which in effect covers two rights. The rights are freedom of religious choice which relates to private and internal matters or individual consciences. So whatever we human beings are practicing for our personal purpose. The second one he had listed, freedom to manifest one's belief which steals the public displays of faith. So whatever we may do it for our personal development, whatever we may do in in-camera proceedings, we may not do the same in a public domain because this may not an appreciable one. That are the reasons these fundamental freedom to have choose and change one's religion or belief is unconditional in that the state cannot justify any infringement or restriction upon its whatever the rule of law system the particular country has. These concomitant rights to manifest religion or belief in worship, teaching, practice and observance is qualified as the state may under the specific conditions as are prescribed law in the society. So these are various functions of their religious freedom. So now we are going to simply verify how these functions are safeguarded are protected in different international human rights mechanism. Although states like India has constitution where there are direct articles which facilitate, yes, human being, citizens have the right. But how it could be translated or verified with the error of human rights? Instead of reproducing whatever articles that in an international document like UDHR, ICCPR, European Court of Human Rights, nineteen eighty-one International General Assembly, other other special rapporter are reports. Okay, the simple code to understand to get a connections or interface between the religious freedom and the human rights or the people or citizen of particular country is permitted to choose or decide or practice or confess or worship. If any reasons we find, yes, these things are not permitted, then there are issue comes. Are we living in a society like democratic society? Whether state itself is simply adhering the principles of rule of law? If any reasons, if we do not find an answer either of these two questions or assumption, then we will say we are not permitted to enjoy the religious freedom whichever is mentioned in any international human rights documents. Okay? So this is a set of goals in which we are going to strengthen our argument. I am not going to simply make any assumption by saying whether UDHR will prevail or Indian constitutional article will prevail. I am not going to. My symbol point to make an emphasis for today's session is how the individuals are permitted to enjoy the freedom whichever is mentioned. Are they literally allowed to have a connection with different content of the international bill of human rights documents? If any reasons, if state herself prove and decide, no, sovereign has the absolute freedom to make a law, to regulate, to restrain any of these fundamental freedom. Because with respect to freedom, yes, we have, there are restrictions. But the reason history or incidents which simply revisit us too. How the Indian legislatures are trying to restrict the right whichever exclusively allowed to climb by the individuals? Is it a choice or chance? Be the human right activists are going to verify how far these things are effectively allowed in the domain of? Okay, in all these articles from an international legal documents, international legal materials, the right shall include have a religion, whatever belief of his choice either individually or community with others or a public or private. These freedoms would facilitate the people to have determined. There are international human rights documents recognize this right to self-determination is a fundamental human right. The same is available for a state or individual or both. I am not going to take anything from international perspective. Since we have your freedom in the name of religion that is confined with only domestic PM. So how far these choice whichever is conferred on the part of a people would facilitate them to realize, choose and decide to make themselves or realize themselves as a happy person? Is it for a private life or a public life? Unless these things are not verified with or narrated with, it is difficult for the state to prove, yes, we the state like India are following democracy where we have a secularism, we are permitting the people to enjoy the secular principles and ideas whatever is translated into the constitution. Good? So based on these international human rights document, let me take you to what is the Indian practice. Let me read out two articles that is twenty-five and twenty-six. Freedom of conscience and free profession, practice, provocation and religion. With respect to public order, morality, health and other provisions of this path, the regulating, restraining, economic, financial, political and other secular activity. So now we could make there are chances for restrictions. But restriction to what extent? Is it leading to the recent issue which we are facing? Or is it a choice on the part of a judicial institution to simply verify? Sorry, you may not go beyond. There are judicial pronouncements like SR Poma's case simply spells out to what extent states are encouraged to enjoy the religious curtailment? It is simply revisit by saying the political party and association should seeks to power through a religious policy or caste orientation, disintegrate the people on the grounds of religion and caste. It divides the people and disturb the social structure on religion caste which is obnoxious and anathema to the constitutional culture and the basic features. But when there was an analysis between what do you mean by religion? In the same judgment, Justice Sama Sama had categorically described. Indian constitution does not define what you mean by religion or religious idea. But he described religion is the positive sense and active instrument to allow citizens for full development of his person not merely in the physical and material but in the non-material, non-secular life. Good? So therefore, state may think of to promote. But if any promotion which could altergate the status of a human being by citing religious or caste grounds, since we are taking generic religion, I am not going to describe anything on caste. In one more judgment, the Honorable Supreme Court categorically evaluated. Because there is a belief in states like India, religions means dharma, but since we have a pluriculture, okay, multi-religious, we can't take. But Justice Hansari had distinguished religion and dharma referring article twenty-five, twenty-six. He described like this, the religion contributes to the changing phases of a culture and inspire ones to build a fragile marital home and god. And the contra, dharma enhances the beauty of spirituality. In one more judgment where the Honorable Supreme Court specifically referred this relating to electoral practices to ensure corrupt practice, the word his has to be understood on what sense? Is it only described the person who is contesting or even the electors? Abiram Singh versus C D Kamachan and Sundarlal Patwa versus Suniloff Indian others. I will quote the exact portions from the judgment. The question before the court was the interpretation of pronoun his under the representation of people act nineteen fifty-one. Is it qualified for the electoral candidates or for the voters as well? The same wording which they have used. I am a Hindu, so vote for me. Is it a positive appeal? Then one more, my opponent is a Muslim, do not vote for him or her, negative appeal. Did these inclusions, would it altergate the status of a state when we are going to speak on to what extent religious freedom may be curtailed? So one side I said, yes, human rights allows the individuals to self-determine, realize, prove, make a complete man. To re-strengthen the essential practices which could be considered as a religious practice or not? Let me read out from a court on constitutional assembly debates. When there was a discussion on article twenty-five, twenty-six, Dr. B R Ambedkar who had described the religious consumptions in this country are so base that they cover every aspect of life from birth to death. There is nothing extraordinary in saying that we ought to strive hereafter to limit the definition of religion in such a manner that we shall not extend it beyond beliefs and such rituals as may be connected with ceremonials which are essentially religious. So now we have a direct description, yes, religious freedom has to be curtailed. But now there is an interface. When we are going to speak religious freedom may be curtailed, is it by referring what? Only the law or by any other means? That I am going to make an interface between human rights and religious freedom. In India, to understand the human rights, we have a human right or protection of human rights act nineteen ninety-three, where we have a definition, it's simple. Human rights are the rights rating to life, liberty, equality and dignity of individuals guaranteed by the constitution are embodied in international covenants and enforceable by the courts in India. There only we have a problem. So if any freedom which are curtailed by the sovereign, I am going to have a case study of two. So to what extent the affected or interested may try to get a facility from the judicial institutions? Because twenty-five and twenty-six, it's very clear, yes, so citing the ground of public order, morality and health, they could. So when they restrict, are we authorized to go and access the code by citing my human right to religion? Or my fundamental human right of religion is infringed? Then judiciary that need to give different interpretation. Okay, it is not an inconsistency. Although states like India is following dualism, whatever which is there in the international law need not be followed. But when we are going to speak, the law which is made for the purpose of restraining any form of already have listed right to breach, right to profess, right to teach, right to worship. If any one of these means which directly or indirectly disturbed by the sovereign state through sovereign means, what we will get it? To make an emphasis, I am going to have two case laws. The first one is the P G Manwale versus State of Kerala. Everybody knows it's a national anthem case. What was discussed there? When a people who are not ready to repeat are open when the national anthem is going, are they literally breach any provisions of a law? If they don't, which made the management to initiate an action? Now you can ask a question. Sir, how you are establishing the interrelations between P J case and the human rights? Right to determine. As a human being, as a citizen of India, I have the absolute freedom to decide. But all, I will, I will not. When I am not intended, is it because of what? Is it because of any other restrictions which is there in the country? No, my religious sect says whatever I am professing, whatever I am doing, it should go only based on my religious faith. When my religious faith does not permit me, does not encourage me, I may come at any offense, I may do any sin. No, because the human rights era encouraged me to realize, yes, you are a human being, you have a right to decide which you can follow, which you don't have a need to follow. But there are some contradictory judgment, I am not going to refer, like the Mohammed Kaniqwaris's case. Where there is a different interpretation was given, where only I proposed just fifteen minutes back. When there is a dispute, when there is a case which is placed before the court, is it a choice on the part of institution to simply verify? Whether they may go with only provisions of a law which is enacted by the sovereign, will they go beyond? So this, a case which facilitate us to understand how the religious freedom would allow the human being to decide. The second interesting case with relating to anti-conversion laws, okay? Due to positivity of time, I am not going to speak much on anti-conversion law. It's a current issue. Everybody is encouraged to read. But in the Sainlu was versus State of MB's case, before that there were laws which was made in a different state, it was not approved. But when this case was placed before the Supreme Court, the honorable court had observed The Honorable Court had observed, the right to propagates one's religion cannot impinge on the freedom of conscience of other citizens. And it does not grant right to convert another persons to one's own religion. How the people are encouraged to convert? There are different state legislatures which facilitate us to realize how these are. Where only we have to trace, are these activities carried by the people in the name of religious conversion? Are they doing it with intention? Are they doing with fraudulent manner? The reason anti-conversion laws simply made the people to revisit why they are, especially the people prefer to convert Mohammedan. Therefore, many state citing law and order as a situation, they are proposing, there should be a law made, but some states like State of Tamil Nadu, there were laws passed in two thousand two, so anti-conversion law and whoever is. Changing the religion because as I had married, it's their choice, no legal institutions may be used as a device to restrain. But when there is a law citing all the grounds whichever listed by the sovereign, if anybody would like to simply bypass it. Is it a choice on the part of a state to punish them? Where only there are recent litigations which are pending before the Supreme Court. The Honorable Court categorically described which proven the state. Or which permit the state to make a law to restrain the people to make their own religious choice. Even yesterday, there was an interesting judgment, this not relating to our subject, the Honorable Court said, the adult who has a freedom to select whether they can use this surname or not, because to that extent privacy is going. So after the Puttasami's case, when we are going to privacy, yes, each and every individuals have a freedom to decide, that's what even our preamble reflects. Liberty, thought, expression, we could, everybody has a freedom to decide what is good for their self determination, whether the right self determination could be measurable by the institutions like legislatures. We, we, we could not make a fault or find a fault with the initiatives, yes, there are reports says mere because of the conversion, they are doing some activities, these activities who directly or indirectly disturbance law and order. There are crime bureau record says, which we are not disputing, but how could the state take an advantage by saying mere because of these states have a bound and duty make a law to discourage the people do not convert in religion? Okay, so in an interesting article which is written by Professor Faishan Mustafa, who is a Vichyanshra for Nalsar University, National University of Nalsar, who had described, the Supreme Court when it was analyzing the Madhya Pradesh government on the conversion laws, did erroneously. He made an alert by saying, these judicial pronouncements made a spark among us the people not to prefer to choose, not to prefer to decide, but he himself posed a question, when these people are not allowed to choose? How could may, they may realize they have a freedom, they have a self determination? So therefore, I am making to this floor, when there is a law which is made by the sovereign, referring any portions of the constitution are encouraged to. Understand the spirit in which that particular articles are introduced, especially when we are going to speak the individual liberty at the code. Because the constitution itself is actively working as an organic instrument to give more protection in the name of religious sentiments, okay? Because this is, this is not a system where you can make everything and you may restrain. When a state herself realize they could do everything and they may restrain, then simple question would arose among us, then what we have? I am a human. I am allowed to realize whichever the human rights document says, still I have a reservation as I had posted very specifically, okay? Because when we are analyzing the part three and the human rights, yes, part three shall prevail, no doubt, but in the name of privacy, in the name of determination, in the name of realization of a human rights, choose, decide, yes. So there are choices on the part of institutions to revisit, okay? Then yesterday there was an interesting judgment from Kerala High Court, it's again relating to religion and our privacy, let me read out from the portion since it's a current, I thought I can speak with you. So individuals are free to perform their marriage in accordance with personal law, but they can't to observe from compulsory solmanization of the marriage under secular law. Marriage and divorce must be under secular law, that is the need of our. Time has come to revamp the marriage law in our country, okay, this was yesterday's comment from the judgment of Kerala High Court. So with this, let me conclude my presentation by saying, this is a quote from William Shakespeare. This time. Thai name, that is mine enemy. What is a monte? It's not a hand or nor foot, nor arm, nor face, nor any other part. What is name? That is which we call a rose. By any other name would smell as sweet. Therefore, so whatever religion we belong, whatever religious practices which we follow, whatever sentiment which we have, all these lead to reach the destiny of God. So irrespective of segregating the religion, irrespective of making division among us the people by the religious sentiments, states are encouraged to make a law and to create unity among us state, among us the people, where people may allow to realize the fullest extent in which they have a life in the mother earth. So unless these people are not realized too, but all they could enjoy with the limited lifespan of their birth. There nothing undermined by saying, any inhuman life in the mother earth, any inhuman life when a system or constitutional clutches which is not allow the people to realize, whenever there is no democratic principles or rule of law are not strictly followed and maintained, where the people are allowed to live in the hell than that of heaven. So therefore, all the institutions, whether they are legislative institutions or administrative institutions or judicial institutions are encouraged to keep the spirit of allowing the people to realize the fundamental freedom. It is by practicing, worshiping, decide and to choose to the extent they may feel, yes, they have realized the birth in which they had a life in the mother earth. So with this, I'll, in my presentation, if anybody would like to clarify anything, I'm welcome. So once again, I thank our Dakshina Saraswati ma'am and the organizing team and the person who made a beautiful welcome address, although I don't know I am eligible for all credits, so he did wonderfully, so I thank each and everyone and a big thank to all the participants who had spent their time immediately after taking lunch, that was Saturday between two P M, anyhow. So thank you very much for all of you, thank you very much.
All right, in the absence of any question, I really extend my heartfelt thanks to you sir for such a wonderful session that you have taken. Now, with that, we have come to the end of our first special session of eighth international conference on recent trends in the human rights and changing faces of religious freedom, put forward by Kerala Law Academy Law College in association with Centre for Advanced Legal Studies and Research. I use this opportunity to thank our resource person, Dr. Alson Lingermes, for spending his valuable time in this discussion. I would like to express my sincere gratitude towards Abhikin Nagrasnara Sir, Director Kerala Law Academy Law College, Professor Arindran K Sir, Principal Kerala Law Academy Law College and Alan Kumar Sir, Professor Kerala Law Academy Law College for providing us with such a wonderful opportunity and for their unmet needs support. I would like to thank our faculty conveners for their unmet needs support. I sincerely thank our student conveners for their tireless effort for the success of this event. Last but not least, I also extend my hearty thanks to all of you for your kind cooperation and patience. I humbly request everyone to attend the Vallette Q session, which is scheduled at three thirty P M today. This is G S Google signing off, once again, thank you all.
Thank you very much, thank you. Bye bye.